Mayor. Mayor, it's six. Tell me when. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to join us for this evening. For the record, it's May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and the time is six thirty P. M. I'll begin by calling the roll call. Counsel, when I call your name, please say here or present. Mayor Maxton.
Here.
Councilmember Stroop is not present. Councilmember Roden.
Here.
Councilmember Bliss is not present. Councilmember Kerner.
Here.
Councilmember Parker.
Here.
Councilmember Menchow.
Present.
With four council members, five council members present, a quorum is declared.
Thank you, Christina. Would everybody please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And thank you. We have a good turnout tonight. We must have some special occasions going on for this evening. But would like to welcome everybody and thank you for attending our council meeting. A reminder to everybody, we are live broadcasting tonight's meeting. And so we do have individuals that are watching this meeting from home. In order to be heard as part of the meeting, we ask anybody that is speaking as part of the meeting that you please use the microphone that's up here. If you don't use the microphone, then the people at home won't be able to hear you. And for those that do get an opportunity to speak, when you first come up and ask that you introduce yourself by name, and if you're a resident or not a resident of Fair Oaks Ranch, or if you're from some entity that's here to speak to counsel, please name the entity that you're here representing. And with that, we'll move on to citizens to be heard. And we didn't have anybody sign up for citizens to be heard tonight. And do we have any individuals that would like to speak that didn't get an opportunity to sign up? Well, go ahead, sir.
I'm Nolan Keane. I live at two nine three seven zero Dewberry Ridge, which is right off of Summit Ridge, which is right off of Dietzel Corn. I'm kind of setting the stage with that, what I'm going to talk about later. But you've heard me talk about bicycle trails before. Guess what? You're going to hear some more tonight. Let me go back to last month. I had an article published in the San Antonio Report that dealt with the desirability of having a bicycle trail that comes up the I-ten corridor from Eisenhower Park and Northwest Military in sixteen oh four, all the way to Fair Oaks Ranch and Bernie, and to have a network. And I like to use that word network of trails because it's usable. I've seen it in San Antonio where they are getting into the neighborhoods now. And I've bicycled almost all of the trails. I'm passing an opportunity to do the Medina River because I don't think I could handle those switchbacks on that noted part. But anyway, I followed that report with an email to Grant Moody, Precinct Three, Bear County Commissioner. And I got an opportunity to speak, to talk to him for an hour on May the third. And really, there were four of us just around a conference table shooting the breeze for fifty-five minutes on about bicycle trails and what needs to happen. And Ken McGlamry, the Parks and Rec Bear County Director was there, and Paul Amen is his chief of staff. So anyway, Commissioner Moody lives in Bernie Stage Road, so he knows the environment. But you know, the first thing that's going to happen this summer, they're going to get bids from Eisenhower Park to Raymond Russell, and with construction to start in the fall, hopefully. And then the second stage is going to be from Raymond Russell to Dominion Boulevard. And then it gets kind of hazy from that point on, no question about it. But you know, I've spent more time than I care to admit on satellite maps and looking where possible trails would be. I said, we ultimately get to Rail Fair Road. And I said, you know, Elon Musk and his boring company, we go under. But I'm only partly joking on that. But anyway, we're still a long ways away from the Lemon Creek Ranch development. I spent a year and a half on the, I wasn't a member of the committee, but I was an interested citizen, Kendall County, but Kendall County Bernie Fair Oaks Ranch Transportation Committee. I know every bad intersection in Bernie now, believe me, and there are a lot of them. But in the January of last year, we had a spinoff group that handled one charge of that committee, and that was to develop a countywide bicycle plan. And we had some good people on the board. Seth Mitchell, I see in the background there, was with us, and had some others who had some development background and some water background. And the idea was to put trails along estuaries, as San Antonio has done. And upshot of it is, and here comes the Dietz thing, you know, that when HEB is, I think, scheduled to be in service next year. I mean, every subdivision from Cartier on south is going to be coming down Rail Fair Road. We will need to hopefully do something with Dietzel Corn. But it does give an increased degree of importance to Balcony's Creek is putting a bicycle trail in. We had Jonathan Collins with Balcor talk to us in that little subgroup. And it, the upshot of it, we drew colored lines on maps. Balcony's Creek was one of those colored lines. Sybalo Creek was another one extending that and connecting up. And it was pointed out to me, it would really be better to talk to the city administration rather than Forha, because if we were to bring a trail in Balcony's Creek, we don't even go into Boots Galvets Park or interfere with any of the park activity. And it would give us another means of getting safely, safely to, I wouldn't put a golf cart, much less a bicycle, on Dietzel Corn today, for that matter, much less when the crunch comes. And so I just ask y'all to take a look at what we can do over the near term and the long term, for that matter, and to try to help build a usable bicycle trail. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here tonight and bringing the concern forward to council. Was there anybody else that did not get an opportunity to sign up that would like to speak? All right, and that will move on with our presentations tonight. The first presentation that we have up tonight is going to be the swearing in of our new council member and our re-elected council member. But related to it, I just wanted to make a comment that Keith Roden is filling council position two that was recently filled by Roy Elizondo. Roy Elizondo filled that position for seven years and contributed a lot to this city and to this council during that time period. And I asked Roy that we wanted to do a farewell for him, and I proposed that we do it at a council meeting. And he referred and said that he would rather do it in front of city staff. And so on last Friday, we did hold a farewell for Roy and presented him with a nice plaque and a little gift for his farewell and all the things that he did on council for the past seven years. And moving forward with that, let's swear on the new council members and the re-elected. And if y'all would join me up front, please. Cameras. Yep. Sure. All right, if you'd raise your right hands and repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Chesley Menchow.
Keith Roden. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of the city council.
The duties of the office of the city council.
Of Member Place Two and Place Six.
Of Member Place Six.
Of the city of Fair Oaks Ranch.
Of the city of Fair Oaks Ranch.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
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 Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And so help me God.
And so help me God.
And congratulations. Welcome back. Christina, do we have the proclamations up there? And we have a couple more presentations tonight. And I'm going to do these from the podium. Can we do that? And the first one is on the Budget Preparation Award. And Summer, would you please join me up here? This is the fourth year in a row that our finance department has been awarded the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. And as I was looking through this, it's a process that we go through. And we submit the documents, it gets reviewed. But what really stood out to me as we went through this is this is, in essence, another internal control measure that we utilize to have somebody outside of our organization looking at how we do our budget preparation. Now, the General Finance Officers Association that covers this, covers all municipalities, public entities within the United States and within Canada. And right now, there are about eighteen hundred individuals that submit and receive this award. And if you think about it, we'll talk about later, that there are twelve hundred cities in the state of Texas. You can only imagine how many there are across the United States and Canada, and that we are one of those eighteen hundred that have submitted for this award and been approved for this award by the Finance Officers Association. So I'd like to thank you and Julie, Julie Lovelace, for all that y'all do on a daily basis. One, for the effort that you've put into presenting a great budget that we've been able to utilize each year that's kept us on track. But in essence, also beyond that, what you've done to submit for this packet and the awards that we keep receiving for your efforts in the finance office. So thank you very much. If we give her a round of applause. And I saw Chief, Chief ducked out. I tell you what, we'll go on to the other one and see if he comes back. Grant, would you mind joining me up here? We have two proclamations to submit tonight. The second one that we were going to submit is related to the National Public Works Week, which is next week. And when I look at our public works team, I look at them as kind of the silent, or maybe even sometimes the forgotten team that works to maintain the essential services that we need as part of this city. And why I word it that way is because truly, if everything is working properly, nobody knows what y'all are doing, right? The water flows, the toilets flush, the roads are in good shape. It's only when things go bad that we start getting a lot of calls about what's going on. Now, public works includes, excuse me, I apologize, includes our engineering services, includes our environmental services. It also includes our maintenance, water and wastewater services that accompany our city. When I look at the daily operations of what they go through, what we probably don't see on a routine basis is what they go through day to day just to ensure that the water flows and the wastewater works and that our maintenance stays up to date. And that's the piece that I'm not sure that I know fully what y'all are involved in. And then with that, to make that happen, then there's maintenance that's required for it so that it will continue. And then they have those procedures that are related to it. And probably what stands out to most is the emergency situations that come up and the involvement that our public works team has to go out and correct those. And I've been with them, or I've seen them, I wasn't with them. I've seen them out on Sunday night when it was forty degrees outside in a ditch that was two feet full of water, replacing a ten-inch water line. And their whole purpose was to get that done so that everybody had water for the next morning on Monday morning, and they made it happen. That's what they encounter, that's what they go through. And so I have a proclamation for them that I'd like to read. Whereas the public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Fair Oaks Ranch. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government and at the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, our water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Fair Oaks Ranch to gain knowledge and to maintain a progressive interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding the importance of the work that they perform on a daily basis. And whereas the year two thousand twenty-three marks the sixty-third Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association, now and therefore I, Gregory C. Maxton, the mayor of the city of Fair Oaks Ranch, do hereby designate the week of May twenty-first through the twenty-seventh as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and the government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, their engineers, managers, employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, our safety, and our quality of life. A witness here of the twelfth of May, two thousand twenty-three. Can we give them a round of applause, please? And beyond the encouragement that was written in there, as you see, for the people that are here and those that are watching the broadcast, I encourage all, as you see our public works trucks out on the road, please stop and introduce yourself to these employees and thank them for what they do on a daily basis because they truly deserve it. So thank y'all. All right, Chief. It was just good timing. May fifteenth of this week was Officer Memorial Day. And the week following after that, which is the week that we're currently in right now, is the week of Police Officer Week. Police Officer Week. And under the leadership of our police chief, Tim Mooreing, and the exemplary police officers that we have as part of our police department, we have set a standard that, well, honestly, we're the fourth safest city in Texas this year. And when I look at that, I mean, that speaks a lot. Because my belief in what I see is that, one, Chief Mooreing has taken his police department, and he has integrated it as part of the community. And what I mean by that is we don't have a police department that steps aside from our city and our residents. He has incorporated them so that they are part of our city and our residents and their day-to-day lives. Yes, we do maintain good road safety. Yes, we do check on residents, well, not we, our police department. They check on residents on a daily basis. They know the residents that may have concerns. They stop by their house and make sure that everything is going well. And even during the heavy rains or even the natural disaster we went through, I believe they covered during the natural disaster, covered almost every house within the city to make sure that everybody was doing okay. In doing all these things, and then the community engagement activities that they do on a yearly basis, behind the scenes, what they're really doing is maintaining the security of our city. And I think that's when I say it stands out even more to me that they've incorporated, accomplished, all of the other things that we do see on a daily basis. But yet, behind the scenes and the things we don't see are making us the safest city in Texas, the fourth safest city in Texas for this year. So Chief, I appreciate everything you do, and I appreciate, obviously, everything that your officers on a daily basis in volunteering and in work do to support our city. And. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which this falls as Police Week. And whereas the members of the Fair Oaks Ranch Police Department play an essential role in the safeguarding of the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the city of Fair Oaks Ranch, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against the deception and the weak, against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the police department of the city of Fair Oaks Ranch has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides a vital public service, now and therefore I, Mayor Gregory C. Maxton, upon all citizens of the city of Fair Oaks Ranch and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May fourteenth through May twentieth, two thousand twenty-three as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies which all of our people may be joining, commemorating police officers past and present, who by their own faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves an inevitable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all the citizens. I further called upon all citizens of Fair Oaks Ranch to observe May fifteenth as Peace Officer Memorial Day and to honor those peace officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or may have become disabled in the performance of their duties and witnessed on the twelfth of May. Thank you very much, Chief, for all that you do. I apologize for taking so long with those, but I believe it's two of the two important divisions out of our city staff that really deserve some recognition. And now we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have several items on the consent agenda tonight. First is the approval of the May fourth, two thousand twenty-three regular city council meeting minutes. Second is approval of the second reading of an ordinance amending the city of Fair Oaks Ranch Code of Ordinance, which is Chapter thirteen Utilities under Article thirteen point zero three, Water and Sewage Systems, Division Three, Part Two, Drought Contingency Plan, which includes the updated definitions, initiation and termination criteria, and creating an appeal process, and amending Appendix A Fee Schedule, Article eight dot nine, water charges, and drought surcharge rates. Third, on the consent agenda is approval of the second reading of an ordinance establishing stop signs on streets within the Centerfield Estates subdivision. Fourth is approval of Mayor Maxton's absence from the May fourth, two thousand twenty-three regular city council meeting. Next is approval of Councilmember Elizondo's absence from the May fourth, two thousand twenty-three regular city council meeting. Next is approval of Councilmember Stroop's absence from the May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three regular city council meeting. And last is approval of the Councilmember Roden's absence from the June first, two thousand and twenty-three and June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three regular city council meeting. Is there any council member that would like to remove any of these items from consent to consideration? And with that, then, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Chesley and Scott. And with that, then we'll go ahead and vote on the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the consent agenda is approved. And next, we'll move on to our consideration items. And before we get into the consideration items, I would like to speak about item seventeen, which I would like to postpone from this meeting until the next council meeting. I believe there's some information that's in the, it's in the document that's provided that may need to be adjusted. And in the coordination, this coordination has primarily been done with our interim city manager, Scott Huzan-Gay, who is not here tonight, and I would like for him to be a part of the discussion when we go through this. And last, when we bring this document back, the resolution, I would like for it to be included or have included with it an MOU on how we would execute a golf cart parade related to the Fourth of July. And so that would outline all the documents and really satisfy all the questions and concerns that we may have. So postponing it to a future date would allow us to bring all that together at one time. Yes, ma'am?
I have a quick question. When we come back to, after postponing it, I'm totally for that, can we have a member of the Forha Board explain to us the MOU? And be present and answer questions?
Definitely.
Thank you.
Then I propose a motion that the consideration item and possible action establishing the city's cosponsorship of a Fourth of July parade with Fair Oaks Ranch Homeowners Association and approving a resolution declaring the parade a public purpose, authorizing street closures for the event, and authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with Forha, be postponed until the next council meeting.
I second.
You so move or second?
He moved, I second.
You're the move.
And any further discussion from council? With that, then we'll go ahead and vote on the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved, and the item is postponed to the next council meeting. meeting. Uh, the next item that we have up tonight for consideration and discussion is the consideration and the possible action electing a council member to serve as Mayor Pro Tem at the first regular city council meeting following each regular city election. And we just produced, completed a city election where we just swore in to a new council member and a re-elected council member. And as part of that process, now we need to, uh, select a Mayor Pro Tem. And I tell you what, I'll kick it off. And my nomination, if she would accept it, uh, would be to continue as Mayor Pro Tem would be Laura Kerner.
Thank you, Greg. Um, and I accept. Thank you.
Totally stole my thunder.
You could second.
I, I second. If we need a second, but.
Well, we'll vote on it if.
I would also recommend that we have Laura be our Mayor Pro Tem again. I think she's done, A, a fabulous job doing it currently, and I think she has, out of all of us, the most experience. And so I appreciate that.
Do we have any other nominations, uh, for Mayor Pro Tem? Okay, with that then, I'll make a motion that we elect, uh, Laura Kerner as Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
I'll give it to Keith. Uh, any further discussion from council on that? And with that, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Laura Kerner, Councilmember Place Four, is further elected, uh, to serve as the Mayor Pro Tem for the next year. Congratulations. Can we give her a round of applause for that? Uh, the next consideration item that we have up tonight is the consideration and the possible action authorizing the city manager to execute a construction agreement for Enchanted Park cul-de-sac, uh, reconstruction. Clayton, are you going to kick this off for us?
Yes, sir. I'm Clayton Holsher, Procurement Manager for the Finance Department. Um, the city initially budgeted a million dollars for various street maintenance projects this fiscal year. Uh, we sent approximately seventy-seven thousand to Techstat for the city's cost share of the FM thirty-three fifty-one Sibyllo Creek Bridge Project. So that left approximately nine hundred and twenty-three thousand that remaining, uh, that remained. Um, so the major components of that were micro-surfacing, fog seal, and asphalt rejuvenation. And then this project, which is the reconstruction of the Enchanted Park cul-de-sac. So back in the city council meeting on April twentieth, we brought three agreements that, uh, combined for eight hundred and seventeen thousand forty-seven dollars and three cents that covered the micro-surfacing, fog seal, and the asphalt rejuvenator component. So this particular item is for the Enchanted Park cul-de-sac reconstruction. It's approximately four hundred and eighty-three square yards. Um, we publicly advertised and bid this project. We had our bids come in on May eighth. We received four bids and Bueno Pro Services LLC was the lowest responsible bidder for this project. Uh, you can see in the table below the bids that were received. This particular vendor, Bueno Pro Services, they've, uh, they have a contract with the city of Bernie, uh, contracts with the city of San Antonio as well. So, uh, they'd be a first-time vendor with our city, but they, they've handle, um, handle other cities neighboring us. So after we reviewed the bids and contacted references, we determined that they were the lowest responsible bidder for this project, that being Bueno Pro Services LLC. We support the Strategic Action Plan for Enhancing Insurance, ensuring continuity of the roadway improvement. We comply with our competitive procurement requirements. So with that being said, the city budgeted a million dollars. Uh, we talked previously about how we had nine hundred and twenty-three thousand that remained, and on April twentieth, we had the eight hundred and seventeen thousand number for the three other components of this. This particular agreement is, would be for fifty-one thousand seventeen dollars and fifty-seven cents with a five percent contingency and the amount of two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-eight cents. And that covers the, that reconstruction component of the program. That leaves fifty-two thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-two cents to cover the striping, markings, the pavement markers, and the signage replacement. And we've started to get pricing for that, and there's no concern on there being any overages or anything like that. The contractor will be required to, uh, sign and execute our standard construction agreement prior to the commencement of work. So what we're recommending is to authorize the city manager to sign a construction agreement with Bueno Pro Services LLC for fifty-one thousand seventeen dollars and fifty-seven cents, with also that five percent contingency and the amount of two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-eight cents for a total value not to exceed fifty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Clayton, I have a question.
Sure.
In the contract, when I was just looking at it, uh, it referred to the scope of services, Exhibit A.
Sure.
Why, why is that blank right now?
Yeah, I should have had that in there. So essentially, that's, that's just the pricing that we'll include for that, which, um, totals that fifty-one thousand. So there's a mobilization cost and there's a square yardage cost, um, that comes out to that four hundred and eighty-three square yards. So the pricing form that we received for their bid will be included in that.
Okay.
And I've, I've got it right here just to, to show you. I apologize for not having that in there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I've also received the insurance that we require as well and verified that it meets all our coverage requirements as well. So we are good to go as far as that is concerned.
And I have a question. Clayton, I don't know if it's for you or maybe Grant. But we're looking at the, uh, the cul-de-sac within Enchanted Oaks and reconstruction of it. Um, was this one further, was it further damaged beyond the other roads? Or is there a point that we're going to have to take a look at the other roads within Enchanted Oaks also?
So, uh, this road is actually on there for reconstruction just because over the past couple of years, we've had issues in that cul-de-sac only. And we did some further investigation over the past two years and come to find out that there's clay underneath that road, and it's that only section that has clay for whatever reason. It was a county road before it was ours when we annexed it. So, um, we also did find out that there's only about three inches of base and two inches of asphalt. Usually you'd see about eight inches of base if not more. So, um, so based off the recommendations from our engineers and stuff like that, we're going there, reconstruct that area. Every area else looks fine. It's been chip sealed before we took it over, annexed that area. Um, so that just seems to be the only section that we keep having problems with. We've patched it already twice, uh, so I finally just said, hey, you know, let's, let's invest the money and get it fixed properly. Uh, the other patches were warranted, uh, thankful by other contractors, but it's just time we address it and, uh, yeah, we keep getting calls on it. So it's kind of like, let's just resolve the issue finally.
Okay.
So.
Thanks, Julio. Exactly what I was.
No problem.
Any other questions from council? Any questions from anybody here tonight? Yes, sir. David, would you mind?
My name is David Horwath. I live on Turf Paradise Lane. I've done projects for many years within chemical industry, and it seems as though that five percent contingency looks low. Is this standard? I just don't know for sure.
So we will frequently, um, use a five percent contingency, sometimes a ten percent contingency. We feel confident on the, the amount of square yardage that, that was calculated in the engineering plans. So, uh, we just wanted to have a little bit of a buffer, but we think that that should cover it. Sometimes with different applications, um, for different materials, when you're using more, uh, like a liquid, like with, where they measure by the pound, and there, there can be a little bit of variability in what is applied depending on the depth. With this type of project, uh, it should equal to four hundred and eighty-three square yards.
Good question. Anybody else? Think could I get a motion to authorize city manager to sign a construction agreement with Bueno Pro Services LLC for an amount of fifty-one thousand and seventeen dollars and fifty-seven cent, cents, with a five per, five percent contingency and the amount of two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-eight cents for a total value not to exceed fifty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-five cents?
I so move.
Laura?
Second.
And Chesley? Any other discussion from council? Uh, with that, then we'll go ahead and vote on the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion is approved. Thanks, Clayton.
Thanks.
Uh, the next item that we have up tonight is the consideration and the possible action regarding requirements or expenditures associated, uh, with our local disaster. And we have no consideration items related to it tonight. Uh, the good news is, is that the, uh, the bulk pickup, the tree limb pickup is complete. And I asked Carol if you wouldn't mind, could, would you provide us some of the, the final figures that we calculated from the bulk pickup?
Yes, sir, and thank you for asking. So, um, final data, total cubic yards of brush that was picked up was approximately forty-three thousand cubic yards of brush and tree limbs. We had approximately two thousand three hundred and fifteen piles that made up the forty-three thousand cubic yards. Um, the total contractor price, the cost came in at four hundred thirty thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars. All the invoices have been paid and the funding came through our emergency reserve funds, the gen, the general fund, emergency reserve funds. Um, I just wanted to assure everybody the final steps of the pickup service to ensure that completion was accurate. Our staff and the contractor spent two days driving throughout the city to ensure all piles were picked up and disposed of appropriately. Um, the completion date, as the mayor alluded to, was May fifth. Staff is satisfied that the contract services were provided successfully. As far as the TIDAM reimbursement, as of today, TIDAM has res- we received acceptance of our request for public assistance from TIDAM. Um, the next, the portal is now open for us to submit all of our reimbursable costs and additional documents. Um, our goal is to up, upload all the, um, required submissions within the next two weeks. So the portal is open to us and we're raring and going and supplying all the important information.
All right.
If you have any questions, I think that's it.
Thank you, Carol. Any questions from council? Any question? Uh, go ahead.
Uh, just to clarify, so the, the amount, so even though the total amount's four hundred thirty thousand approximately, um, only a, a little bit over a hundred thousand is reimbursable through TIDAM because that's the part for Kendall County?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Is the TIDAM money first come, first served? There are a pot of money that everybody goes in for at once, and then when it's gone, it's gone?
Great question. Unfortunately, I don't know the answer. I can get back to you on that unless Chief Mooreing happens to know that answer because I know he is spearheading that project.
And actually, there's not a TIDAM pot of money. So the Texas Division of Emergency Management is only a facilitator, uh, in getting to FEMA.
Oh, okay.
So these are national funds that'll be coming through, through FEMA or from FEMA, uh, through TIDAM to support, uh, the emergency response that we went through.
Wasn't sure if we needed to pounce on, on a number before we started.
Uh, any other questions from anybody here tonight? All right, without them, we'll move on to our workshop item for tonight. Which is me too. Golly, how did I get so many speaking parts tonight? Uh, which is the water, wastewater and emergency response disaster recovery, uh, town hall. So this is really a recap of our town hall meeting, uh, that we had uh, just recently. Some of the, uh, and the packet has some of the comments in it also. But, uh, I thought that we, we picked a good topic, uh, especially during the timeframe that, uh, we were finalizing some data related to our wastewater treatment plant. And also with the, we're about to stand up, the screw press system by the end of this month, uh, related to it. Uh, we had sixty-nine individuals that attended, uh, as residents from the City of Fair Oaks Ranch, uh, which I think is fairly comparable to the number of residents, uh, that we had for the transportation town hall meeting. I'd like to see, uh, that we get that up a little bit higher. But as we keep doing these, I think is where it gets out and people realize the valuable information that can be gained from the town hall meeting. My hope, hope being a weak word, but, uh, that we could get more people interested in coming out to see what's going on as part of the city. But really what we're looking for is feedback as part of that so that we understand, we know, uh, the desires of our residents and the direction that they want to go, uh, with the topics that we've presented. A, a couple of the items that came back, uh, from the town hall is that the overall feedback was, uh, for the town hall meeting was positive. Uh, residents felt the information presented was of value and they want more town hall meetings in the future. So that was from the individuals that attended. And residents thought that the breakout stations were the most valuable and informative part of the town hall meeting. Um, and overall, there was great interest in continuing the town hall meeting and some of the attendees offered that the suggestion of the street maintenance program, uh, would be a good topic for the next one, uh, providing the schedule and the type of treatments that would be provided throughout the city as part of the next town hall meeting. My take on it is, is that I like the format. I like that we come in, uh, we provided, I think it was ten minutes. Uh, Grant had a presentation. I provided some information. And from there, we, we asked if there were any general questions, but from there, we really move out to the breakout stations. And we had four breakout stations established for both of the town hall meetings. And I believe that's where people feel, uh, that they are more comfortable to ask questions in a one-on-one environment instead of getting up at a microphone and introducing yourself and asking a question in front of an audience of seventy-plus individuals. And so I think it, uh, one, uh, it allows us the opportunity to provide information. They were trying to get to residents and do that in a more one-on-one fashion, but other individuals were around the table. They get the information also. But also that I feel that, uh, residents are more apt to provide feedback to us in the one-on-one environment, more so than they would in front of the, the seventy-plus individuals in the auditorium. And from my perspective, it's really the feedback that we're really looking for, uh, to make sure that we stay on track. So this item is really a, an after-action review, uh, that, uh, that town hall meeting. I kind of gave my comments upfront. And I'd like to hear from any other council members if you had any other things that you noted that, uh, you believe would be ways that we could better improve, uh, the town hall meetings that we're conducting. Yes, ma'am?
I have one suggestion. I think when, um, I had kind of brought forward this idea for the town hall, um, I didn't really envision it being a full-on council meeting that had a quorum of council members, which requires very particular things that happen, right? You know, making an announcement, having our people, citizens to be heard, residents speak for five minutes. Um, and I was, I was kind of envisioning kind of a rotation of council members attending. Um, and I don't know if that's something, um, you'd be, you know, council would be willing to, to do. So not, every council member attends every town hall. It'd be less than a quorum so that we would all kind of rotate and have an opportunity. So that was just an idea I had because putting it as a formal city council meeting puts a lot of restrictions on what we can talk about and how we talk about it and the whole format of the meeting. And I was just thinking that might, that might be it. As long as, as council members agree, hey, I, I'll cover this one and you cover that one, then it would, it would allow for more flexibility in the town halls.
Okay.
Just an idea. I would say I agree with Laura in a sense, and also it gives us flexibility. I think it seems very, um, we're on a schedule where we have to do these things. We have to, as council, all stay to the end and all these things. And it seems less interactive, I would say, with residents. It seems more too formal, if that makes sense. And so I think a lot of residents want to come and go.
And so, I think a lot of residents want to come and go. They want to hang out, they want to ask their questions, and they want to leave. And it, I think they want it to be a bit more flexible, and right now, it seems very inflexible, if you will, or, no, I agree with Laura.
Okay. Dan, maybe, I think the question came up when we were preparing for this town hall meeting, and is it a matter of if we have four or more council members that we have to keep it as a formal meeting?
So, yes. It is, it is more limiting in that respect. You know, I, I think the only thing I would caution you about is that even if you have less than a quorum there, we have to be ca, and I, and y'all know this, right? You, you have to be careful about those, you know, topics coming up. We don't want walking quarums, you know, following these things and that sort of stuff. But you can certainly do, as Laura's suggesting, and I think Chesley's agreeing, that, and have a rotating number of council members and, and get that less formal atmosphere if that's what you're looking for. But if we're, if we're going to have a quorum present, it is going to need to be posted. It is going to be a formal meeting if we're going to go that route. And it would need to be, even if, even with, even with other communities, when they have a town hall, if there's going to be a quorum present, we're going to have to have a printed agenda posted. And if you don't have a quorum, and I think this was the question, Mary, that you and I talked about, what if a quorum doesn't show up? Can you still have this meeting? Once it's posted as a formal meeting, you, you can't have it. I mean, because the meeting can't take place without a quorum present. And I think that's the, was your concern you expressed, and, you know, especially as you go into the summer months, it might be harder and harder, you know, to get, you know, a quorum together on those unscheduled, you know, or those extra meetings, so.
But if we, if we, if we kept a rotating roster and we identified three or less council members to attend, and we stayed to three or less, then we could go this route.
Yeah.
Keeping it informal.
I'm happy if you guys come up with a quorum and there's one too many, I'm happy to bow out. I'm going to say that now.
You're volunteering right away.
You're volunteering. I am volunteering to say, ah, I'm good, thanks.
Okay.
And I think if we just planned it out in advance, we won't have that accident of somebody accidentally showing up when, you know.
And I agree with what Laura's saying. It does become formal. It was a formal process where we have to call the meeting to order, take roll.
What if we don't have a quorum?
Right.
Yeah.
And really, we want to keep it informal. I think informal is the, the best approach, and in that sense, you get the, the better comments from it, so I agree.
I would say I think that people are more likely to share their opinions in an informal setting versus standing up in front of us in a formal setting. So, I'm hoping personally that by having it this way, it might strongly recommend to people to come and give their opinions, even if it's just five minutes, just run in, say what you think and leave versus feeling like they have to stand up in front of people, do citizens to be heard, all of those things. I think it's just so much more.
So, could we approach this, I'm sorry, could we approach this from a standpoint that there's no, no meeting at the beginning of it? That all we have are the, the breakout tables and people can come and go? It's open from seven till nine? And you can come at eight and view the information and ask questions? Is that kind of what we're envisioning?
I mean, we could even still have the presentation if it's ten minutes or less at the beginning. I think what it's taking away is making people sit through several citizens to be heard when they might maybe want to go to see a breakout table pretty quickly. But I mean, I, I think there's value in, in some level of presentation in certain topics from staff to address those big questions upfront, and then it's the individual questions at the breakout stations.
Agreed. All right. Anything else? Yes, sir.
He's a town hall regu, you're a town hall regular.
Yeah. On the first town hall meeting, I spoke there, believe it or not.
You did?
But I, I guess I was caught off guard. I mean, maybe that's not the right phrase, but of the format that was presented, I, you know, when I think about a town hall, it, we've already discussed here, you know, it's more informality and stuff like that rather than what we do in this council meeting, so. Anyway.
Do you agree with that, or?
It didn't keep me from speaking.
Do you agree with the, the informality? You think that? All right. Anybody else? I've seen it on the agenda, it'll probably be within the next two council meetings, we'll come back and we'll start looking at establishing the topic for the third quarter town hall meeting. All right. And next, we'll move on to our reports from staff. And first up tonight is Christina. And talk to us about the process for filling our boards and commissions for two thousand twenty-three.
Good evening. Christina Pachocchio, City Secretary. I'm going to speak with you tonight about the boards and commission schedule that's coming up. We started maybe two years ago with an annual process where we rotate through the variety of committees and commissions, trying to make sure that everyone who's involved is still interested in being there and giving other opportunities to new members if they're interested in joining. And initially was a brainchild of Councilmember Kerner, who thought this was a, the way to go, to make sure we had new interest and, and new ideas on every board and commission. This is going to be quick now. I just want to kind of go over the dates that we're going to be looking at to try to get the new round of applicants in. So, we are going to look at our current rosters, and right now, I'm just going to skip us here. We have fourteen total members that are up this year. There are two in building codes and three in all of the rest of the committees. So, fourteen total members will be looking to try to either encourage to stay on or if they're not interested, to try to get new members. We're going to email all the incumbents in June, post those positions on the website, and start our social media push to let all the other citizens in the, in the city be aware of it. I'll do a status update to council in the second meeting in July, and the application deadline will be August ninth. That'll give us time to gather all of the information, present it to council, and for council to decide whether or not they're going to want to do interviews or allow those members that are already on the, in the committees to stay on board. And then we'll have our appointment selection on September twenty-first. Our orientation and training for new members will happen that last week of September, and all of our new members will start their new term in October. I don't know if anyone has any questions or?
Nope.
Okay.
Any questions from anybody else here tonight?
If you know anybody who's interested in serving on any of our boards and commissions, we welcome the telephone calls, the, the nudges, trying to get as many people interested as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. And we move on to our last item under reports from staff, which is a report from our Planning and Zoning Commission and from the chairperson, Bobby Barnes.
Thank you. I'm Bobby Barnes. I'm at Seven Falls Terrace here in Fair Oaks Ranch, and I have been serving as Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is going to fall off. Okay, sorry about that. Of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the last year and a half. I am very happy to report back to you that we had a meeting on May eleventh, and I took to our meeting your recommendations of what you were looking for in it, and we took over an hour and a half to reach consensus on that. And we had a really rich discussion on just what we thought was the right way to chunk it, if that's the word you used, and I'm repeating to you. And we came up with five priorities, and can we go to the next slide? There we go. And it's really a building block situation here. Our first priority is administration. We picked on administration because it is the foundation of the UDC. Without a solid foundation, you have nothing to build on, and if you went and amended what you currently have, you'll find it's not in compliance with the Texas building, well, the Texas government code, local government code, and it has a lot of inconsistencies. And all of this was found way back in March twenty-fifth, when it was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, a diagnostic report. And it basically said we needed to build, start our foundation first before we built. So, our first priority was administration. Our second priority was, is then to come with zoning and to tackle all of zoning. Rather than be behind the eight ball, we want to be ahead and make sure we do it holistically so that it is not in conflicting with anything else in there, because we know once we have conflicts in there, then we may not even have a sustainable and enforceable document. The third topic is the third part of the UDC, and that's the subdivision standards. Then the fourth would be the site and building standards. And then we'll touch the top. As you can see, the last brick can be laid up top with the others miscellaneous things on signs, compliance and enforcement and definitions coming up. With this, we thought then we had a very holistic approach of building a good UDC as you work through it, and we're always ready here to help you work it. I already have, I believe, I have three of my commissioners here tonight, and I know with staff support also walking through it. Now, how we are going to attack this for you is on the next slide, if we can go to that. We have come up with some tentative dates. Our first date, we have to do a special meeting. We have our regular meeting on June eighth, but we will have a special meeting on June sixth to tackle topic one. And then the others, five topics will be hopefully attacked during our next three meetings. And those are our regularly scheduled meetings, July thirteenth, August tenth, and September fourteenth. Why we rescheduled, it didn't reschedule our meeting, why we added an additional meeting on June sixth is several of our council members, commissioners, I'm sorry, several of our commissioners are going to be absent at our regularly scheduled meeting, and we wanted as many there as possible. So, June sixth was a date they all could make. With that, the third next slide, if you'll go to, is the format that we have agreed to. It was recommended by staff and we thought it was a very good format coming out where we'd have three columns. We have the section that it applies to. We would then have the change that we made, and then we'll have the third column for the reason of the change. Now, what you have there is simply imaginary, so don't think that's anything valid coming out of the document. But that is an example of how we would build this, starting with the administration area so that it would be very easy for you to isolate on what the changes are that we've made, and you can then move on and do whatever background you need to do on that, if any, and move forward to maybe approve the, each, each priority by itself, hold a joint public hearing, and incorporate that into the UDC in each bit and build it up to the entire UDC at the end. With that, that's the end that I have. I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions?
Thank you, Bobby. I think you answered actually my questions before I was able to ask them, so appreciate that, you thinking ahead. So, your intention is with topic one, you'll sit down and come out with a version of the UDC with those changes and a list of the changes, and then we'll review that as council and potentially approve that, move on to topic two after that.
Yeah, we have already gone through the entire UDC and have our, our new unadopted version, so we've already gone through the details. So, we'll just go through the, the chart that is prepared and make sure that the chart agrees with what we, we have actually done. And staff's going to prepare the chart for us.
Okay, I, I understand the chart philosophy. I like that. My question is more related to the documents. How will the document be presented to council for approval? So, we, so say we want to approve topic one after we talk about it, what will the document look like that we're approving?
Well, it will be all these sections in the document that you'll be looking at. And that these will be, we can't isolate and just give you one document. It will refer to lots of different sections within the total document because we can't, we can't pull, it, it's all so intertwined.
So.
It's hard to describe it.
I'm not, I'm not asking you to do that work, I'm asking for somebody to do that work. But what I'm, I'm saying is I think council would like to see a document that we're approving rather than, because if we're going to approve a UDC with the topic one changes, we need to see a copy of the UDC with just the topic one changes, so we can approve that.
May I interrupt?
Sure.
Yes, it would be like, and it would be an ordinance amending that section of the UDC, like we currently do ordinances and resolutions, amending a section of an ordinance.
Okay.
Does that answer?
So, the.
It would be an amendment showing you the change.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense. And so, for instance, with administration, there might be changes in multiple different chapters like you're referring to, and it would be listed there on the table.
Correct.
And so, we would be approving those specific changes, and then it would be codified by staff.
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question. Would we see a red line of those changes in the document? Is that how it would be presented as well as this, this chart here so that we could see?
Yes.
How it was before and how it's going to be? Is that, is that the expectation?
Yeah, typically, how we do that here and how those will come forward is any additions will be underlined and any deletions are going to be struck through on a red line.
Yeah, I have to see it that way. This is good, this is a nice summary, but I have to see the document with those changes, so that's good.
Absolutely.
And I have a second question. Would we have to hold a public hearing after each section that we approve? Is that, is that the direction we'd be going?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I believe it's a joint public hearing with the planning and zoning because we have not held one on it either. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Were there any other questions? Maybe? All right. Well, that completes all of the, the items that we had on for the agenda tonight. And we'll move on to request an announcement. Does any council member have an announcement that they would like to make for this evening? Nope? And the only announcement, excuse me, the only announcement that I had listed out was really identifying that the notification of the fourth safest city in Texas, they came out, and we've already pretty thoroughly discussed that, and our recognition of the police department. But over twelve hundred cities in the state of Texas, we rank number four. So, that's a... And Carol, any announcements from your end?
No, no announcements, thank you.
All right. Is there any council member that has an item that they would like presented on a future agenda?
I had actually just a quick announcement, I'm sorry. I just wanted to welcome Keith to city council.
Thank you.
That was it. And I have no agenda items today.
Anybody else have any agenda items that they would like? All right. And as far as I'm tracking, no requirement for executive session tonight? You want, did you, did you want to find a way to? I mean, we've made good time so far, we could. All right. Christina, anything that we missed or that we need to cover? As part of the meeting?
Yes, sir.
And Carol, anything that you saw that we need to track on or all good? All right, I'm tracking the time now is seven thirty-eight, and we are adjourned.
So, the one night I actually...
So the one night I actually.